Won't even sit down. Oh, wait, it's a work session. We don't have to do that yet.
No, it's not.
Oh.
It's a special meeting of the board of all.
Oh.
But you don't have to. We don't have pledges on.
Okay. We'll have to keep track of us.
Call this special meeting to order? So we have to roll call. Yeah.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Wolfman.
Uh, here.
For now.
Well, we have that, so. Well, this meeting is about a new appointment, uh, as you all know.
First, accept the resignation.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm okay. Well, I was gonna get to that because...
You know he has to give a speech on everything.
I do have to, uh, we have Bryant's resignation and, uh, so, well, I'm accepting that resignation.
Okay, get out.
And I'm presenting to the board is Ashley Armbruster here. And I want to, I would like to have the board's approval to appoint Ashley in Bryant's spot. Do I need their approval or not?
It requires the advice and consent.
Oh, okay. I'd like your advice and your consent. First of all...
They should be voted on.
Okay. Any advice?
He doesn't wanna be an alderman anymore.
No, we're not. We're not talking about Bryant. He's already gone.
Oh, Ashley, yeah, she's got something in her butt there. Her dad was an alderman.
Really? Okay.
Yeah, right? Yeah. And your grandfather too.
My grandfather was 1970.
Oh, okay. Yeah. He's got a long list.
Well, I'd like to make a motion and have a motion to appoint her as alderman.
I'll make a motion to appoint her.
On second.
Have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome aboard, Ashley.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm gonna stick around. I'm gonna stick around. Now that I can be an angry citizen, I'm gonna come over here and...
Did you stop?
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Brian, did you get, can you ask to look at this?
N- I did not.
We'll look at it while you're sitting back.
Need my shirt worn in? Wanna have something to do? I'm gonna take a handshake, Jimmy, but this works too. Thank you, guys. Very much. I have to log on my email in this first and then I'll get it. Thank you. No, I'm gonna stick around. I have an audit to run over now, I guess. Thanks, Brian.
Did you just have to go through so I just got to work and I didn't get one for today?
I'll make my rounds. Yep. I've been working.
Yeah. Exchange.
Suzie?
Yep.
Thank you very much. Already got you. Already got you.
You got it. Best of luck, man.
Completely overlooked it.
I possess all the qualifications. Pissed right by law, prescribed for the office of alderman.
For the office of alderman.
Ward four.
Ward four.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, sir. That I was fourth constitution of the United States.
That I was fourth constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
And the provisions of all laws of the state of Missouri.
Affecting cities of the fourth class.
No.
Affecting cities of the fourth class. And the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
And the ordinances of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
And that I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of alderman.
In the office of alderman.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
Of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri.
From which I was appointed on the thirteenth day of February.
From which I was appointed on the thirteenth day of February, 2020.
Congratulations, Wolfman.
The meeting, now I declare the meeting adjourned. About that, just that meeting. Now we'll go on to the work session.
Okay. Who's doing the job here?
Steve and I are.
Come up, pull your chairs up.
So, good evening. I'm the mayor, city council. My name is Ron Smith. By way of reintroduction, I'm the division manager for Alliance and Steve is our local manager here, of course. And so, the purpose of our requesting to be on the agenda for the work session is, you will recall, back in the fall, I believe it was, October or September, October timeframe, the council was talking, during the budget process, was talking about capital improvements and in particular, five-year plans, five-year capital improvement plan. So Steve and I have been talking, discussing, hashing, praying about it, everything, and we thought we'd throw out an opportunity to the council. We think this might be the best way to proceed with the capital improvement program. It's called a supervised, an owner-supervised system for the state of Missouri, the Department of Natural Resources. I have a copy. Everybody's got a copy, good. And so what it is, the Department of Natural Resources is, would like and is trying to incentivize water system purveyors to go this route, to take a more of a holistic, big-picture look at capital improvements for water systems instead of the traditional method. Most communities, most water districts, they submit their plans, one project at a time, for water main extension, a new tank, a new pump station, et cetera. So they, the Department of Natural Resources, come up with this program called the supervised system. And what it entails, like I said, it's a big-picture look. The requirement is that the purveyor put together a master plan, have an engineering, a detailed engineering analysis of the current system, which includes an hydraulic study and a current layout of the system, actually run a hydraulic analysis on the system, and then by doing that, we'll be able to prioritize projects and improvements over time instead of, as I had mentioned, just, well, I know we've had a couple breaks down on Main Street, we'll probably just need to replace that. So this is a more efficient, a more technically sound way of looking at capital improvements, and it will also be more cost-efficient over time. I've got, currently, like I said, what you have to do is you submit your plans through the DNR and it's the permitting process, sixty, ninety, sometimes a hundred and twenty days before you hear it back, and you do that for every project. That requirement goes away. Once you apply and you're approved, the city will be responsible for doing those projects however they see fit in accordance with the master plan that has been developed. And there's a lot of, lot of benefits for that. Steve, you can pick in whenever you feel like it, but...
So...
Yes?
Normally, if you're doing a water line, the engineer produces a set of plans that are submitted to DNR for approval.
Yes.
And they're approving the design.
Mm-hmm.
You didn't no longer approve the design?
No, because they approved the application, which will be in accordance with the ten-state standards. So everything going forward...
So they're just gonna take our word from now on, they're gonna be designing them?
Yes.
In accordance with the...
Well, and then we, we report back after projects are completed. We send in the finished product. But yes, they are entrusting because a professional engineer has to put this...
Well, that was true last year.
True. That's true. But, no, they, they will review when the project is done and off you go. When I was at C1, we, at the time, back in the nineties and early two thousands, it was the largest, second-largest growing water district in the state, and so we became a supervised system. We had, we had subdivision after subdivision, main extension after main extension. We became a supervised system. We had a PE on staff, and we were able to, within four years, completely renovate the entire system. So it's, it's a very good way to do it. The drawings that are, that will be provided, the detailed drawings, will be standard drawings that, going forward, every engineer, let's say we're gonna replace a water main, those detailed specs, the thrust block, the fire hydrant installation, those will be the same from project to project to project. So construction methods will be the same as approved by the DNR. So you will have standardization throughout the five years of every project that's done. Flexibility, so you prior, the plan will be prioritized for the projects, but over time, as everyone knows, things change, right? So the city will have the flexibility to alternate priorities as time goes. You're not stuck with project one, two, three, four, or five. Those are the ones that have been identified in the master plan, and when we start out, that'll be the priority list, but as time goes, everyone knows priorities change. Another important, yes, sir?
Are we talking changing all of our water lines in five years?
No.
What percentage?
It's, I mean, it's hard to say. It's gonna depend on the project and money available. Yeah, so this plan, sir, will have a list of projects in dollars. That's another thing. You're automatically gonna get a five-year capital improvement plan, the project along with a cost estimate with it. So the council will be able to use this annually for your budgeting process and to see if you've got enough money, whether you wanna postpone a project, et cetera. So it has many advantages.
Is there any downside if you have a plan and you don't, aren't able to pursue it from DNR's perspective?
No. At the end of five years, you can, you'll probably wanna reapply or recertify, and then you'll carry those projects. The DNR will know that those projects weren't completed, you'll carry them. If they're still important, we'll carry them forward along with additional ones. So, yeah. Another thing, the direct cost savings, because the detailed drawings are gonna be standard, those small projects, Steve and his crew will be able to handle in-house. There will be no additional engineering required. We're talking projects less than seventy-five thousand dollars because of the prevailing wage. Well, but those small interconnects, tie-ins, looping, we won't have to have an engineer draw specs for them because we'll have all the detailed drawings. The construction methods are in place, they'll just be able to go to town.
So it's conceivable and likely, it seems to me, that the eighteen thousand, seven hundred plus expenses, the twenty thousand dollars, would be captured over a pretty short period of time.
I think so, Martin. Just the fact that, as you know, every engineering firm has a way they like to do it and materials they like to use, well, that's gonna be taken away. They will not have to redesign any of the typical details that's already there. Yes. And, um, let's see.
So, while I'm sure Cochran would like to make the twenty thousand dollars, Dave, why do you recommend something that's gonna limit your business opportunities in the future?
Well, yeah, I would, to me, one of the biggest benefits that we see here is it does set you up on a, you know, kind of a systematic program for the work you're wanting to do. When we do this with other systems, we, we just tend to see that it helps the city get more projects done. When you look at this on a five- or ten-year basis and the projects you're wanting to do over that time period, and those get prioritized and cost estimates put together, they just, you know, we work with staff coming up to those projects, the board, the board reviews and agrees, disagrees, changes priority, and then we just start in on the projects and over the course of time, they get done. You know, I, I wouldn't necessarily say it limits our business. You know, the one thing I wanna make clear, that if, on the larger projects that you do intend to put out for bid to contractors, most systems would still have engineer drawings put together, but there wouldn't be the need to permit those through DNR. So you would, you would save that permitting time, which, as Ron said, is typically sixty to ninety days.
In 2009, there was a water systems study for St. Genevieve. Not gonna comment on the merits of that, but was any of that, the hydraulics that you were talking about, does that, in that period of time, have things changed such that you have to do it again?
Yes. In 2015 and 2016, we replaced over three and a half miles of line. Larger line, upsized lines, looped at that end. The hydraulics have changed, yes.
Okay.
So, tagging with Dave's, I think it's the systematic approach that's a big advantage. You never lose sight of the goal. I've worked with Dave up in Franklin County, and I can provide the references up at Franklin. If you wanna see how that program is going, Franklin County one and three, both used Cochran, actually, as their engineer, but they're also under a supervised program. And you just, it's amazing how it always stays on the front burner, these projects that were once deemed priorities. And there's a reason they're deemed priorities, because the engineering has been done and the hydraulics have been run, and so it's not just something that's been thrown out there. So if you don't get it or there's not the money there, you still have that, that big master plan that you can refer to next year and say, "Well, we didn't get to this and this one, let's budget for that." And it just seems to facilitate progress in capital improvements. I think that's, and that's what the DNR is looking at. They, they want a systematic, holistic approach, the big picture, right? Instead of just projects, pet projects and things. They're kinda going on a limb, they're, and let's be honest, they don't have the manpower to, to study the efficacy of a project. They just look at the design. Okay, you're building a tank and a pump station. Well, they look at that to make sure that it's in accordance with state standards, but they really don't know if that's going to improve the city's distribution system or not. That's why they kind of push this, because you've got a professional engineering firm that looks at it and says, "This is what you need to do." So I think that's part of the draw as well, so.
Are there any disadvantages?
The upfront engineering...
I mean, besides that.
No. I can't think of any. The good thing too, operation, Steve will work hand-in-hand with the engineer. So there's a lot of things that engineers will need, it won't be, their study won't be in a vacuum. In other words, they won't just come here and get their own thoughts. They'll, they'll be working with Steve and his people to put out a good product. So that, it's always important to have the operational aspects along with the engineer.
So he has oversight over each project as it's being completed. Is there an engineer that comes in and watches them do the job, the contact?
Yes, you can hire a construction inspector. Yeah. And typically, when an engineer puts together span, plans, and specs, they always offer a line item that says, "Construction, inspection..." Inspection services. Yeah, services, X amount of dollars. Yeah.
So over the period of time, though, can we run into a situation where something we've already engineered becomes obsolete? And then we have to make a change or, you know, maybe a particular material used or...
Well, for one thing, so the master plan won't have any of the, it'll have the general detailed drawings, but it won't have that particular job engineered. So it's highly unlikely that, so let's say it's a main replacement, six-inch main replacement, two miles, that was listed as a priority, and this is what, this is how the hydraulics will look after. Well, you won't get the engineering design until you bid that out. So it's not gonna be a, now, you, it may be not a priority, as high a priority, let's say, four years down the road, the system, you had growth in one area of the city and not the, priorities might change.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And that's another thing about, that's a benefit of this, the flexibility to be able to change priorities.
This really doesn't take our system into consideration now and break out any detail as far as what needs to be done?
That's part of the application process that will be to study the current system. Yes, that is, that, DNR wants to make sure.
Right.
Yeah, 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 so that's, they'll want a full drawing of your current system, pressures, gradients, the whole thing, and then they'll expect a hydraulic analysis of the system and then projects to improve the system.
So that fee is included?
That's part of the, yeah, that's part of the...
This may help provide some clarification. This is a, this is the past report and supervised program we've done, and part of what's in here is typical details. So this, this right here is a detail for bedding water main, and it shows how that would be done, and this is something the DNR will review and approve. Detail for gate valves, fire hydrants, bins, thrust blocking, surface connections, there's a few others in there, but I think you kind of get the idea of what we're talking about. We'll work with Steve to see exactly how you guys want that done for your system. Those will get submitted to DNR, and DNR will approve those typical details, and in those typical details, which will govern any future work that's done under the supervised program. So that's kind of how DNR does it, is that they, they know what's being done because they've approved how the work's gonna be done.
Jimmy's got a question.
Are we, will they tell us which, which gate valve we're gonna use or whatever? Are those gonna be specified in the drawings or just...
Manufacturer probably won't be specified, but...
Because I know we had problems with some things you said, "Hey, I'm not using this anymore."
Yeah. Materials that probably inspect would be, materials must be what? AWWA compliant, which is the, which is the standard. Manufacturer's not gonna be specified.
Okay.
And that could be handled either way. If Steve has three manufacturers he likes, we could list all three of those. If he'd rather just leave it out, we could, we could not list any. That could, that could be handled however the city would like.
So what was our total engineering cost on this?
Eighteen thousand.
Was it eighteen thousand? Plus a provision for some direct costs, like copying.
Two hundred and fifty.
Right.
And then obviously, any drawings or any kind of intellectual material in its electronic format, that, we own that, then?
Yeah.
What's the repository for that? Where is that? We have a server somewhere? How do we store that?
Just on, it'll be on computers, city files. We don't have a server.
Okay. Something to work on. Another work session, yeah.
No.
So it's something to think about. It's, like I said, I'll repeat myself, a systematic, technically sound approach at planning your next five years as far as improvements on the water systems.
What do we have planned for the summer, or the near future, by the way?
Well, it's on the agenda for later tonight, but it'd be a water main replacement of seven hundred and seventy-four feet on Cedar Lane, and then the overlay of that at North Fourth Street, down off Biltmore to Roberts.
Can you say something about Biltmore at one time?
Yeah. Biltmore, down to Roberts from here.
Oh, okay. No, of course.
Have a quick, for example, Steve, that's a good one. We didn't know until we had the little break up here on Fourth Street of what we had. How do you know what you've got at different locations?
Previous water leaks, maps, potholing efforts.
I mean, do we have other instances we know where we've got asbestos water lines already?
There's only one other line in town that may have a short piece that we are aware of, and that's on Main Street in front of Overland Yard.
Okay.
But...
I'm not saying this...
You're surprised when you dig a hole in St. Genevieve.
I am not saying, that's all that's out there. That's all you know of. Correct.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Gary, you got a question?
No, sir.
Okay. It just looked like you had a question.
Thank you very much.
He wanted it, it was in front of his house.
So, absent any objection here, we will put this on our next meeting agenda for your consideration.
Where did you say you were going with this?
Please.
Franklin County three and Franklin County one. I'll give Martin, the board president, and Pete and Carter, or anyone on the board, and just get a feel for how it works, how it goes, what they think about it.
Is that what you're...
It's a public water supply district, number three of Franklin County. That's all they do is water and sewer.
And how long ago did they...
Currently.
They're working on it right now?
Right.
Steve, you said you've replaced how many miles?
Last project was three and a half.
How many miles we got left? About? I'm just...
We've roughly thirty miles in this section.
No, we'll discuss it in the meeting.
Okay.
Jerry's here.
That is.
Okay. So we have time left with this, and Jerry is, you know, the cable station is here. Rather than discussing it kind of during the course of the meeting, I'd like to clarify what kind of went on with these emails you've been receiving on the...
Thank you very much.
Contract.
Thanks, guys.
Do we do that? It's moment of the event.
Every year, we approve a contract for the community access cable system. It's always been an annual contract. The problem that I observed is this contract comes due kind of in the middle of the year. So we have this discussion about the budget and what to do in the budget relative to the contract, but the contract's already approved and it's gonna carry over, so it kind of makes the discussion on the budget side moot. So I asked that we try and make our expiration date on the contract match the budget cycle, and that can be done by one of two ways. One was to approve a shorter contract that expired in eight months, which would coincide with the end of the budget year. The board has, and so I made revisions to what they sent me to reflect that. The board reviewed that and understands, I think, Gary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the goal we're trying to achieve here, but has proposed different language for that, and so let me pass these out, that accomplishes the same thing. And I don't have any pride of authorship, just as long as we kind of achieve the, achieve the goal. So what they're proposing is that we go ahead and approve a contract that has the twelve-month provision in it and the dollar figures that correlate to a twelve-month contract, but that it contain that dark shaded area, a sentence that says, "The city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve Community Access Board will have an agreement in place by October 1st of 2020, covering the timeframe from October 1st of 2020 to the end of the fiscal year, September 30th of 2021." I think that's fine. I mean, it achieves the same goal. It just gets, gets it on the right cycle, so you're able to talk about it in the context of the overall budget when that, when that time comes. Did I say anything contrary? Okay. All right.
Proposing that the sentence in the upper end be added to the board contract. That's a stop gap. To meet the contract for the budget year.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
So what you have on the agenda tonight is an approval of a contract that doesn't contain proper language. So what we'd like to do is if you make a motion to approve that tonight, that it be adding this sentence and amending the dollar figure to reflect a full twelve-month contract period.
Which is what you have in front of you that's highlighted in the outline?
Oh.
The twenty-nine, two fifty.
This year.
So basically, for the twelve-month period, the dollars have to change. The dollars stay the same. All we're doing is agreeing to execute a new contract before the end of the one you're approving.
Yeah.
This and this, one and two.
And that'll get all the...
But I still think that we've got either something missing or we need to just get rid of the word "either."
Yeah, get rid of the word "either."
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna met...
Where's this?
On city responsibilities. It says, "In exchange for the successful operation," says, "The city will pay the board either twenty-nine thousand, two fifty," but there's no "or" statement. So we separated it into two...
I think "or" was then the next sentence that just ran out. The next sentence that just grabbed, it didn't work out.
So there's not information missing, we just got to get rid of the either.
Just get rid of the either.
So we're going to amend it to get rid of either, and then to also have this new language, highlighted language. That's what we're going to vote on tonight.
So we have to wait and vote on that?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
I just, we'd have to discuss your time, or we can do it while we have this time.
That's fine.
We, we would see all those changes on. Forty-three, forty-three, second reading.
Yeah, if you approve it with those amendments, when it comes back in two weeks, it'll have your thinking.
Did you keep notes to make your motion?
Okay, that's all I have.
I'm going to refer to this, but yes, I guess that's going to be my responsibility. Thanks, Jeff.
No pressure.
I'll forget by the time we get to that. It's been a long day.
Hey, you'll have to occupy yourself now.
We're talking about the audit.
Sure.
I mean, but you, I think you said maybe a work session later?
I've already asked for it.
Oh, okay, then forget.
But, but I'm asking you for it, so while you're here, we can do that. You had the audit. I expect you to have reviewed it. The auditor has made recommendations that we change procedures in some pretty meaningful ways, I think, and, and, and I don't object to any of it. I mean, it's not that she's wrong. I did object to one thing that we changed since then, but, uh, the, uh, but it's going to be a substantial amount of effort to establish these policies, and she sent me a sample, and it was like thirty-six pages long, and had accounting procedures for your community center, and it's just, if we're going to do it, they need to propose something that coincides with what we actually do, and, 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 and so she's going to come make a presentation and ta, and talk about those things.
Is this something they could do for us at a cost?
Yeah, that was my question as well.
We have to decide, I mean, yeah, they could do that.
I mean.
But, but.
You mean come up with the procedures?
Honestly don't want somebody sitting in Washington, Missouri, trying to figure out what the best procedures are for St. Genevieve.
I mean, my, my.
I think the staff has to direct that.
Yeah.
She can type it, I mean, yeah.
Well, my question was to you, having read that, those recommendations, would you lean on any kind of contracted support at the same?
I'd shop, yeah, I mean.
I mean, who, who else would do it? You?
They would give us a template, and, and we would then revise it to reflect our reality.
At a cost. We would incur a cost.
Well, I mean, I, you know what I'm saying? I, I might, what I envisioned was, here's a sample, policy and procedures, although I don't want it to be thirty-six pages long.
Exactly.
And, and, and it would come in a Word document, and I would, Sue and Pam and I would massage it and, and get it to where we thought it needed to be, and, huh?
Get it down to maybe ten pages?
Yeah, whatever, yeah. But, uh, that, that's kind of how I saw that, that happening. It would, that would take time and consultation and, but that's, now, we could pay them, I don't think there's any reason to pay them to sit there and watch us do that.
No.
The thing I did, they.
I, I don't care how.
In two thousand, yeah, well, yes.
Let's make sure we have all ends on deck that we need to.
In two thousand and twelve, when Mary Ann retired, we received her records, and, and, and there were people who owed the city money for fines they didn't pay, or they didn't show up, so there was, and, and, and we got it down to like six thousand dollars worth, we couldn't, from eighty-six thousand dollars worth, that we couldn't, we couldn't find. That six thousand dollar figure has been kind of reflected on the city's books every year we have an audit, just keeps carrying over, because it's uncollectible. We don't know where these people are, I mean, you know, how the municipal court operated, or operates. The information gets old really fast, I mean, people move and they're, you know, it's not worth the cost of what they owe you, trying to figure out where they are. They wanted us to come up with names and addresses and social security numbers of all of these people, and we said, you know, it's just not possible. They, they want us to get that six thousand dollars off the books. I don't object to that, you know, but, but I don't, we can't get it off the way they want us to get it off, and they wanted us to send the six thousand dollars back to the state. Some of it, the city's entitled to, but how much is problematic, because we don't have the information we need. So rather than having that recommendation in there, they changed it for us to follow the directions of the judge. Now, I don't know which judge she's referring to, presumably now it's going to be Judge Ennis. And, and, and we'll just go to him and say, what do you think we ought to do with this six thousand dollars? And he'll tell us what we do with it, and we'll send that information to the auditor, and we'll make the amendments in our next, in our, our next audit. So that, that recommendation changed as a result of, of our input. The others, I think, you know, we talked about fund balances here, you know, I mean, we, we haven't acted on it. They're recommending that we adopt formal policies on the fund balances. I, I, that's sure, we can do that. It does require coming to a consensus as to what's an appropriate dollar amount, but having an auditor, an accountant here who has a broad range of experience in multiple communities in the state, I think would be useful to direct us in that regard, and I think that'd be a good, a good work session.
Absolutely.
So, that's what we're going to do. Yeah.
Any more? Jimmy got?
Yeah. Who do we stand on Lisa's cross training?
It's ongoing. She takes on more responsibility every time we do something.
It's going well.
For instance, she now brings me the payables, and she prepares them, and, but she, you know, many of the things, you know, Sue does, you do three times a year, or four times a year, so you just kind of have to wait for those cycles to come through. All right.
Any other questions? Some time, it's our session.
So is that a work session? So we're done with that work session?
We're done with it.
I don't have anything else to discuss. I like how you handled that, thank you. And it just wiped out some discussion that we would have otherwise had in the meeting, and it's in a public session, so it's good.
Do we have a date with auditor, do we?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I wanted to have a work session before our next meeting, five o'clock.
Can I, can I make a request? If we have five o'clock for sessions, that's really difficult.
Are you to get here?
We're getting a lot of information that day of, like, if information's coming in throughout that day, I, and I work, today I was there, seven-thirty to five, and I did not take a lunch break, so it's very difficult for me to accurately, or adequately prepare if we're getting information the day of, and I worked up five. I don't know if anybody else has a problem with.
There won't be any, there won't be any additional, you've got the audit, and it'll be discussing just that.
I'm just sort of talking about on an ongoing basis, and I don't know, I don't know Ashley's schedule.
Be getting, getting things.
Yeah, but if we get things the day of the meeting, and then the meeting starts at five, it's really tou, hard to be.
Like the cable television revisions that came up.
Yeah, yeah. I was looking at that in between bites of my salad, and I.
Well, it wouldn't have come up except for that guy on the end down there, Buck. He called it, it happened.
I get it, it happens.
Yeah.
But man, the five o'clock is just tough.
I'd be amenable to any other time you want to have a work session, it doesn't have to be the night before the meeting.
But I was going to have a cupcake, I knew I had.
We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderwoman Johnson.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderwoman Armbruster.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Like the approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us down to Martin's report.
Okay, well, I'm not going to report on meeting with the National Park Service, because it's been published in the papers, and you all know all about that. I do just want to talk about the FEMA. I've mentioned to you in the past that we're working with FEMA on damages. We've done this, let's see, since I, my nine years, there have been five different events where we've gotten the compensation for damages, and Gary's been through it more times than that. The, this time FEMA has said that they want us to get communications from the Corps of Engineers that returning the silt that builds up behind the levee, the, the gates, and, and returning it to the river is okay. Well, one year, we did something else with it, and they got really upset, because it's hazardous waste, and you can't take it off-site, and you can't, so we were doing what we always knew we were supposed to do, but for some reason, now they want the Corps of Engineers. So I finally got in contact through emails with this guy with the Corps of Engineers, who said, you give me a call. I've been trying to call him for, I don't know, a month. I gave him my cell phone number, tell him to call me anytime, and I just can't get in it. All I want from them is a communication that tells FEMA what we did was okay, and I think he's thinking, why, why are they asking this question? Why am I, why are they involved in me in this? So I'm going to keep working on that, but it's weird. The, it was a meeting in Perryville, the county commissioner was there, I was there with the city, this Perryville Industrial Development and Economic Development people were there, and the city administrator was there. It's kind of pursuant to the conversations that the mayor has had and communicate with you about the possibility of having a, a joint economic development activity in, in the city that involves the county, and the Industrial Development Corporation, and the Chamber, and, 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 Perryville has a full-time economic development activity. It's a not-for-profit corporation, independent of City Hall. So we talked about maybe adapting that model, and how it might work, and whether they would be willing to, to, to cooperate, and they're more than willing to mentor the, the city on, on doing this. They also talked about maybe some kind of, some kind of intergovernmental agreement, or is, is something that would give them kind of a more active role. I think that would be hard because of loyalty issues. I mean, you, your first priority would be Perryville, so many prospect they get, you know, it's going to go, but they're very, very cooperative, and I think maybe something will, will come of that later for your, for your consideration. The Industrial Development Corporation is still pursuing residential development, and they talked to this church about the alignment of the Parkwood Extension, and the church is apparently the current finance committee of the church is desirous of pursuing that, to the point that they're even talking about moving it over to create lots on both sides of the road, and so, so some progress is being made along those lines, and, you know, as soon as there's kind of a meeting of the minds, we'll, we'll get, we'll get them before the Board of Aldermen, so you can hear what, what they're thinking about. I told you where I was advertising the tourism director and the city administrator. That has produced, for the city administrators, I think, at least two or three quality candidates. The tourism director, not quite as good. I met with Alderman Johnson earlier, and she asked about kind of expanding the net a little bit, trying to pick up some others. Talked to Sandra. The only thing she had to add to it was the alumni, there, there's, Southeast has a hospitality program, and they have an alumni communications, and they actually have a job board. So, early in the week, I posted that there, and, and, you know, I, I think another week, maybe week or so, will let us know, you know, whether it's time to start interviewing, and we'll call the committees together to, to start that process. The, I had talked to you at our last meeting about the downtown TIF, and the fact that the real estate base had been met for the first time, and we were making a distribution. There's a provision in the TIF agreement that if we don't make a payment, then the, because the revenues aren't in, that the amount that's owed to the project is, goes on account, and if no payment is made for three years, then they're entitled to interest. The question that I, that, that raises is, there were three years for which no real estate distribution was made, the pilots, payment in lieu of taxes, and the, but not three years on the, on the ETS, which is the economic activity tax, the sales tax side of it. So I didn't know whether any interest was due only if you didn't make the whole payment, or whether you can segregate those things out, and I've been trying to get an answer from Gilmore Bell on that, and I, and I haven't received it, but it's, it's not a lot of money, and neither party is concerned about it. They're pleased to get what they got, and then we'll reconcile the accounts, the accounts And I talked about, already talked to you about having a study session to review the audit report, which we'll schedule for, before our next meeting, and if there's anything that I need to distribute before that, it will get to you well before the day of the meeting. Anything else? Any questions? Yes, sir.
You talked about this Parkwood Extension with Chamber and Church and stuff, I mean, is any of the money that we spent in the past, any of those engineering or whatever we done, can we reuse any of that?
I gave a set of those plans to Ron Klein with the Industrial Development Corporation. I think they are, the fact that we have them, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars worth of work that doesn't need to be redone, except if they're now talking about moving it, that doesn't, doesn't apply anymore. The road design standards will stay the same, but you'd have different grades and different, you know, the whole kind of.
Someone had brought up the idea to me and stuff, but as an alternative to that, if that doesn't work out, moving up to Bosler and following the property line down that power line.
If you look at the comprehensive plan, and there's the, the transportation portion of that, the anticipated extension of Parkwood actually intersects with an extension of Bosler before it goes out to Progress Parkway, so that was envisioned, when they kind of did the, the, the plan for the, for the comprehensive.
It's like a lot longer distance then.
It is, it would, yeah, it, it would make that, the overall distance would be greater to get from where Parkwood ends now to Progress Parkway, but it would create an interconnect with Bosler, which has had some advantages. But, you know, we're two million dollars away from doing anything, so.
Nice dream, though.
Make no small plans.
It's good to have vision. Any other questions for Martin? Thank you, Martin. That brings Chief Stiger up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Start off by welcoming our new Alderman person, and offer the same thing we do with all our other new ones whenever you come in. You're modern welcome any Wednesday night, come out when we're doing our maintenance, and tour the facility, and sit down and talk to staff, and find out what we do and how we operate, so you're welcome anytime. Got a, a few things on the thing. We are a little busier this year already, as far as calls. We did make a couple of changes on the responses. In past years, the CAD system that they used to dispatch us out on couldn't be fine-tuned. Last year, they got a newer CAD system where we're able to take out things for responses like the doctor's offices and nursing homes, where they really didn't need the extra medical assistance. So I'm hoping that drops our calls, probably fifteen or twenty calls at least throughout this year, so, end of the year, I'm hoping that we'll be down fifteen, twenty calls instead of the, the two A we did last year, made those changes. I have been out on medical leave, but one benefit is, you saw here, is I've been able to make a few extra classes on leadership and things like that, which I think is going to be a benefit. Probably the biggest thing that I'd like to get some guidance on is under the facilities, I marked down that we got the rough numbers, and on the LED switchovers for our firehouse, rough numbers right now, they're figuring about eighty-five hundred dollars, with a potential rebate of almost five thousand, with a total cost of like thirty-seven hundred. of almost $5,000, with a total cost of like $3,700. I would have enough money on my line item to do that, but the problem I have with that is it's gonna tie up almost all of my line item for a period of several months until we get the rebate in. So, as far as we're concerned, we're ready to go out for bids for the equipment, and my guys are gonna do the manpower to do it. I just need direction on where we want to come up with the funding to do it.
That's Joe.
Kenny, have you looked at potential savings on electricity?
Yeah, we don't have numbers on that yet, but...
Right, so that'll pay your $3,500 back over a period of time.
Yeah, over a period of time.
If you had no cost.
Yeah, over a period of time, yeah.
He's old. Joe.
That one got nice.
He's old. He had his hand up, that's all.
Yeah, you have to wait to be right there.
No, Joe.
You don't quit.
Respect your Alderman.
My apologies.
Problem was, I mean, the only problem I see with this is, it's a city-owned building. Couldn't this come out of capital improvement fund rather than them deplete one of their line items and hope for a rebate to be?
Yes, it could.
I mean, I don't see why we would have to go that route.
But even, even with the rebate, you understand, all revenues, we've had this discussion, go into the general fund. They don't replenish line items.
Well, I'm, yeah, but I mean, as far as the budget goes, it's depleting his budget.
It is depleting his budget, and when we get the rebate, it won't...
It'll go back to him.
... restore his budget. His budget will have been depleted.
Right. It goes back to the general fund.
So, how did we pay for the lights in the Piva Building?
A loan.
So, what was your proposal?
Pay for it out of capital improvement rather than their line items.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if it's a city-owned building, it, we should, I mean...
I agree.
And both reap the benefits of the savings.
Right, I mean, it's... And the rebate will go back to the general fund.
Those are the general funds.
They're just coming to the general fund, and your town will state the same then.
Okay, yeah.
Good deal.
We'll go ahead and go out and seal bids on the thing, 'cause it is over the $5,000 limit, and we'll get the project going.
Okay.
The only other thing we really have going on is our end-of-year maintenance. We go through all our small engines, and we do oil changes, and then the trucks we started on too, oil change, lube jobs, and keeping everything maintained up out there. Other than that, I think things are going fairly smoothly out there. Open to any questions.
Thank you very much, Kenny.
Thank you.
Thank you. David?
A little bit going on. We had a work session and a meeting in Heritage Commission, and you'll see tonight, it says Economic Hardship Ordinance, but it's actually titled Unnecessary Hardship, so that's on your agenda for this evening. Uh, you've got the numbers there on permits and inspections. Rental Housing Advisory Commission, as I mentioned last month, didn't have a quarterly meeting. However, we did take some time and add rental information to the city's website. I wanted to let you know that. There's a tab now for, it says relocating, moving. If you click on that, it'll give you information on citizens, electric, on getting gas or propane, on rental houses, and trailers, and apartments that are available in the city, and the landlord's information, so, uh, it's helpful. And people come into City Hall for that pretty regularly, so now they can go straight to the website and have it available. Planning and zoning, we had a meeting for a special use permit that will come before you next meeting. And on the property maintenance, there wasn't any movement this past month, but those 17 properties that are left, we have a action plan from all of them. It's just a matter of it's slow-moving.
David?
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Gary Roth, come to the podium.
Good evening. You got my report in front of you. We did a concrete sidewalk up on Ridgeway to eliminate a major drainage issue up there. Uh, we just patchwork on Ridgeway, Ninth, and Jefferson. Uh, we got all the trash cans and lids painted in the park, the picnic tables. Finished cleaning up from a flash flood. We did a bunch of cleaning and organizing in the shop during the cold days, serviced some small equipment. We spread salt a couple of times just on the bridges. We lucked out on everything else. Burnt a brush site, uh, put riprap on a creek bank on Chadwell, which is actually 10th Street, uh, before Chadwell. We have an issue there we're gonna have to address a little more than just the riprap. Uh, started prep to replace a culvert pipe on St. Mary's Road. Started working on the street sign project for downtown. Uh, we hauled off a lot of truckloads of old piles from the basement of City Hall.
They had already been declared by the crier boards that you have to, their retention, and crier boards had already approved for their disposal, but we just had never taken the time to have them done, so...
Where'd they go?
Recycling.
As much as we could, we recycled what we could. Some of it has to be shredded.
So, low couldn't, couldn't take it to recycle.
We did a couple of things I didn't have on my report. We did some work on a drain pipe and ditch up here on railroad tracks that was washing out. Uh, painted lines on the bridge out here, and we poured and installed a couple storm drain lids that had been broke around town. Anything else?
Gary, the street sign project, is that the existing signs? Were you updating, or is that a new project?
It's changing all of the street signs downtown.
Oh, okay. Not the...
The street name signs.
Gotcha, okay. Not the ones with the historic sites and all?
No, no.
Okay, okay.
The actual street name signs.
Oh, thank you. Just to update.
Yeah, and then also, it's going to add a third blade to them, and it will be in French.
Oh, okay.
The street name.
Are you still the green?
The, the street names will be green and white, and the French will be blue and white.
Very cool.
Bob?
Thank you. Um, Martin talked about earlier about this amount of silt and stuff on the outside of the floodgates. Uh, I think you removed all of that. How much was there?
About 190 truckloads. Yeah.
Wow.
This time was worse I'd ever seen it.
Right.
I guess just the duration of the flood.
Yeah, water was up a long time.
But, you know, like Martin said, once before, we hauled it out, and we actually dumped it on Levy District property, and then they used that to do some, you know, dirt work and stuff on the levee, and apparently, we can't do that.
Is that it, Bob?
That's it.
Joe?
No.
Uh, just a quick question on the culvert pipe for St. Mary's Road. Is that between Bakers and Joneses?
Yes.
Okay, now they'll take care of that problem?
Yep. That, we determined one in the fall that that pipe has partially collapsed in the middle. And it, and it's not in line with the ditch that comes down between them two. It actually has to make up. So, we're putting it, we're being straight line. Just waiting on a couple of days of weather.
There are a couple of areas where we have pounding after significant ratings.
Right there, Spengler.
You identified, okay, what is it? The two that I can think of, and that's still on your agenda to do.
Oh, yeah.
Take it, sir.
Thanks. Takes us to, thank you very much, Gary. Committee reports? Well, we're at the committee reports. Uh, nothing for planning and zoning, I know, there never was. But, I would like to, Mike, you're on the Park Board Committee.
Yes.
I would like to relieve you of your duties. Ashley has been spending, doing, up on, in part, she's not on the Park Board, but she's very involved in the Park Board, so I would like for her to take that responsibility. Is that okay with you?
I would like that, too.
Okay. But I would like to, for you to consider, you get with David Bova to put you on the Housing Authority Board, which meets once a month. Uh, we need a, a rep. Jimmy was doing that. It's kind of difficult because it's, it's once a month, but it's a one o'clock meeting, and I've had a difficult time having somebody that, that can meet with, on that, so...
Okay for me to speak with Dave and get back with you offline?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, so. That'll do that. So, that'd work out great, Ashley. Is that, pardon me?
Bob still does not have an appointment.
Well, that's right, yeah.
One o'clock afternoon is working for you pretty good, then?
Uh, yeah, that's...
The TV board, right? Bryant was the liaison for the TV board.
Oh, no, Buck is. Bryant was just on that board.
Oh, gotcha, I'm sorry. Yeah. Let's keep track of it, no problem, no problem.
Okay. All righty, is there any public comments? So, what did he, no, not yet. No, we do that with the board and then the mayor. We talk here. Okay, takes us down to the consent agenda. Settle down outside.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Takes us to old business. It should be the second reading of Bill Number 4340, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County regarding county regarding nine-woman dispatching services for the calendar year 2020.
Motion to approve.
Bring it. Need a roll call, please?
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4340 now becomes Ordinance 4267.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4341, an ordinance allowing the 2020 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales taxes of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, between April 19th and April 20, 25th, 25, uh, 2020. Move through. Second. Have a roll call, please?
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill Number 4341 now becomes Ordinance 4268.
Thank you. Takes us into new business. This is Bill Number 4342, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Band. Can we have Jim Donzie here if there's any questions? Uh, anybody has any questions about this, or...
Yeah, come on up, yeah.
This is gonna be our 75th year.
I talked to Pam yesterday about Sandra Cavett's job and, uh, wanting to know something about Saturday's in St. Jen, so when I go to my board, we have something to talk about. So, she said she didn't know because you haven't hired anybody yet. Uh, so, I'm gonna talk to the band about it, see what they want to do. I don't think there would be a problem that we could still continue to do that if, if everybody's in favor of that, and whoever the new tourism director would be, if they want to continue that. Uh, also, I will need a, being John Mooney is not on the Board of Aldermen anymore, I'm gonna need an Alderman for the band grant committee to come to our meetings.
I think that'd be a great job for Bob Donovan.
When do you meet?
Yeah, when do you...
We meet three times a year. It's March, March, uh...
That's bad, bud.
We meet in March, July, and, uh, I believe it's October.
Well, I believe Bob Donovan would be happy to serve you.
Just let me know when.
Okay. We usually, Bob, we usually do it on Sunday nights at six o'clock at Zero's, so we can sit around, eat a little meal.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
It's pretty, it's pretty informal.
Oh, my God.
So...
Got three volunteers.
Okay. I'll get your phone number from Pam, and I'll let you know when the first meeting is. And that's, uh, all I've got.
With respect to Bill Number 4342, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Takes us to Bill Number 4343, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Bill Number 4344, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the city of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Community Access Television Board.
You're up.
You're up, says it.
Uh, I make a motion to approve with, uh, the following changes. On Number 2A, remove the word either. Can I also ask that we make it basis? And with the, on Number 5A, with the amended language that was distributed this evening, do I need to read all that out? Okay, thank you.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4345, an ordinance amending Chapter 410 Historic Preservation, Article 3 Landmarks in Historic Districts, Division 2 Certificate, Certificate of Appropriateness, appropriateness, Design Guidelines and Standards by adding Section 410.395, point, determin- Determination of Unnecessary Hardships.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4346, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional services with Cochrane Engineering for water main replacement.
Move through.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4347, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, amending Chapter 115 City Officials, Article 6 City Administrator, Section 115.190, Appointment Qualifications of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances as set forth below. Jimmy?
Motion to table.
Second.
Why are we taping?
I don't have to give a reason.
Okay.
Well, but you do have to establish a time when it, we can brought that up.
Do it at the next meeting.
Have a, I have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay. Nay, excuse me, nay.
And then a Bill Number 4348, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, amending Chapter 200 Police Department, Section 200.015 Chief of Police. Appointment terms, salary, removal of the St. Genevieve Code of Ordinances as set forth below.
A little discussion on this and stuff. I mean, if our system's not broken, why are we changing it? Are we trying to accommodate someone or something, or I, I just don't understand why we're changing it, so, you know, I've heard a lot of discussions over the years and stuff about these positions and both of them being in the city limits, and there's just a, um, you know, this is a small town, um, you know, I, I just don't understand why we wouldn't do that when we've done it over the past. I mean, we've, the current people do that. We've asked the current city administrator to pay rent for nine years to do this out of his pocket. Um, you know, and, and I know we're restricting it to the county and stuff, but, you know, a lot of that goes back to our geographic location in the county. Um, and this is, you know, nobody's called me recently, but this is the discussion I've heard over the years, is if we have somebody living in one of the outreach areas of the county, uh, people have a tendency to migrate out of the county then. You know, not only, maybe their kids go to a school in a different county. Um, I just, that concerns me of why we're separating that. I, I mean, it has nothing to do with job performance where a person lives, but it does have something to do with the public's perception. You know, in some areas and stuff, we actually, where you pay your property taxes is determined where your residence is. Um, I just think it needs more discussion.
Okay.
If I may, I'm, I'm just curious, are we entertaining Bill 4348 strictly because we're entertaining Bill 4347?
Well, yeah, I think we're both of them go hand in hand, or...
Well, they just both have the residency requirements.
Right. But they don't have to go hand in hand, but...
We, we could totally consider 4347 and not consider 4348.
But, I mean, 4348, theoretically, the police chief is a city official. I mean, he would fall under that as well. So, he would, he would... So he would, he would fall under conflicting ordinance.
No.
No, because those are separate ordinances, one deals with the qualification for city based, one deals with qualifications for police chief. My, my question wasn't advocating for either position, just clarification, like, why are those married together?
You know. It's just the only two examples of a residency requirement that are in the code.
I just make a motion and we table this one also.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Until, until the next meeting.
Next meeting? Bob?
You know, how are we gonna have open discussion on it in a?
All it is, is this, it's gonna be an up or down vote. It's gonna be, the board is gonna decide what we're gonna do if, if it comes up again. Because the way I see it, we can discuss this issue until the cows come home. And that's all we'll do, is, and my whole point of this is, is I'm okay with that, go out and get the information, just like I did when I, because it was, I wanted to make sure that I felt good about the decision, because I brought this up, felt good about it, and I did. I went out and I talked to somebody that this is gonna affect, and I really feel good about it because they made some really good points to me. And, and for me, and it's pretty much, and I guess where I'm at with it, Bob, is, is, and I get that if it's not broken, don't try to fix it, but you have to, somewhere along the line, sooner or later, folks, if, if we're gonna go forward, you have to have some, you gotta think about making some changes, and change is difficult, and I get that, and I understand, hear me out, I understand that, but, but my whole point is with technology and what we, it's, it's different than it was thirty years ago. It's different than it was ten years ago, you've been around long enough to see the technology we have, and, and for these people to be, and then, then my other thought is, is you're telling me that if we had somebody that was vested and lived in this community, he would have to uproot himself and do like Martin and go ahead and force him to, to rent in the city, that is just archaic. That just makes no sense to me.
I wanna go on record that I wasn't forced.
I understand.
I would. There's no way I was gonna commute and do this job personally.
Based on legal opinion we got from Mark back several meetings, and that was the fact, we can change this at any time if the need arises.
I'm also curious about the timing of the bill.
Joe?
Sorry, Mr. President.
Hey, man, whoa, Joe's got the floor.
I, when we talked about this a few months ago, or a few weeks ago, whenever it was, I listened, I mean, and Mayor, you made the most convincing, compelling argument that actually changed my mind on it, and I had made a few comments. After you had spoke your opinion on it, which you just did as well. And I publicly said at the meeting that I agreed and that I didn't have a problem with it after talking to you. And boy, did I hear about it the next several days, from people that, they want our city leaders living here amongst us. And I didn't hear much on the other side. You know, I, I don't have as much of a problem, really, or, what do you call it, relaxing the ordinance for the city administrator per se, but the, the people I've talked to think that, you know, our, our chief law enforcement officer, his response time could be crucially important in any situation, and the argument is made, well, the county is not, you know, well, they have their own jurisdiction to worry about and their own calls to worry about, and they're not always available. Granted, granted, the chief has his own personal life to worry about.
That's my whole point is.
And I understand that, but what I'm saying.
He's not sitting at home waiting for the call.
I understand that, but when he is, he's a lot more accessible than if his home is, is outside the city limits. So as much as I, my personal opinion keeps moving back and forth on this subject, and it is a tough subject, I, I personally would have to vote based off my constituents, and they say, from the people that I've talked to at least, or have contacted me, they don't wanna see either one of these change. And, I mean, I have to represent them, I.
Hey, I, I agree with you. Hold on, Ashley, Jim, give me your.
Go ahead, let Ashley, and then I'll come back.
I know I'm new to this, but I have had discussions with people in my ward and around the community about this as well, and their feedback is much, very similar to what Joe's gotten, and it's like, why, why would we allow them to live out the county, outside the county, what's the purpose of that? And I understand your argument of the technology, but that's the same as if Officer Bennett was in Saint Louis for a family event, you know, at the night of an emergency. So I don't feel like that's the basis for the, the argument here. What I'm thinking is more in line with Bob and that, what's the purpose for this change? Is there somebody you have in mind and we're catering, or is there limited housing in town that they couldn't get to? Like, are there more substantial reasoning besides, let's change something that's worked in the past? And then, how far do we go with it? You know, we represent our wards as the city administrator represents the town. If we allow them to go out of the county, why can't we allow us to go outside of our ward and choose what ward we want? Like, how far are we willing to relax our positions? Because it, it does come down to perception, like Bob said.
Okay. I'm hearing the same thing they are from my constituents. The other thing I wanna bring up, the current police chief gave up a lot to come here. He had to move, sell his house over there, move over here. It just seems like we're doing it kinda backwards, but.
So what you're telling me, if, if the current chief of police is, his family's growing, he needs to get a bigger house, he's gonna have to either buy or build that house here just to be police chief, and you'd be opposed of him going into the county somewhere and buying a house?
Correct.
I just, let's say, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with what the board wants to do, but I just, those are my thoughts, you know, and I, it's just like, but, that's fine.
So my question is, then, if you've already had conversations with your constituents, why table it? Why not just vote on it now?
I table it because we have a new order lady, and I thought she might have.
But it sounds like she's informed, so I'm wondering why we're tabling it? That was my thinking.
Well, I'm all for tabling it now, because there's nobody more visible in this town than Paul Hassler, and I haven't heard or hadn't, and I know one person is vocal as can be, has not even said a word to me about this, and maybe it's because the people of the town don't know, so, but, I haven't had a call, so I would like to, I would like to table it.
For how long?
And I would like to hear from, I would love to see when, when the next meeting, I'm gonna encourage people that are against this and for it to come to the meeting and speak about it. I think that's, I think that's what we need to do, I think that's okay.
What does the current chief think?
Pardon?
What does the current chief think?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
Well, I mean, they're both here.
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Also welcome to the board, appreciate you coming in. I think that there are a few interesting points. First of all, like, like Martin, I didn't ask for this ordinance, you know, I'm not advocating for the ordinance. I did sacrifice quite a bit to come here. My, my situation was a little bit different. I'm not gonna be here forever. I may not be here very much longer, I don't know, you never know. If you have a qualified applicant that's looking at this position, I love Saint Genevieve, I dearly love Saint Genevieve. Saint Genevieve is not a great place to entertain a family. There's, you can't do all the shopping that you wanna do in Saint Genevieve, there's nothing, you know, so if somebody has children that lives outside of Saint Genevieve and to force them to move into Saint Genevieve, again, I love it, I think it's a great place to raise kids, but we, we lack certain areas that I think that would attract as, as decent candidates as we've had in the past. Just based on, on that, on that demographic and the, you know, the bowling alley, the movie theater, the, I hate to say Walmart, or, or even someplace to go buy jeans, or someplace to go buy shoes, you know, we don't have that in town. This ordinance doesn't require me to buy a house in town or pay property taxes in town. If I lease a car and rent a house, you know, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't force me to, to be a property owner here, you know. I think what it does is breed an opportunity for somebody to be deceptive, you know, if, if you're going to, to make them have an address in town, you can have a post office in town, you can have, you know, if that's where you're getting your mail, or whatever, whatever guideline that you put in place that requires somebody to live in town, if, if that's a property tax, again, I, I can't be forced to buy a house here. Or I guess I could, I mean, if that's, if that's what you choose. But, but what, at what point does it become the, the physical place that you lay your head, the, where you get your mail, where you pay your property taxes, you know, all of those things come into play. You know, I certainly, there are other agencies, Saint Louis. Most, most of the munis that I know of now don't have an ordinance or a residency requirement for officers, I've not explored for, for the police chief. As mentioned, I, I play music on the weekends, you know, my, my kids are involved in every sport known to man, so I don't spend a whole lot of time in Saint Genevieve when I'm not working. Not because I don't wanna be here, just there, there are other things that prohibit that. If something drastic came up, this would be the first place I would come, you know, obviously, I'm gonna come running. But I think if, if we take a reasonable stance on this and a reasonable, maybe, maybe not even necessarily a geographic footprint, you know, you have to live within this area, or you have, you know, you have to live within a so many minute response, you know, you have to be, be able to, and I think a lot of the fire departments and everything in Saint Louis do that, you don't have to live in the zone, but you have to be able to be here and so, so long a time. You know, again, you know, Martin has paid rent here for, for a long time, and I, I see both arguments a little bit, I think that it, like you said, I think it, it would appear that you're catering to somebody if you're changing this now when it has come up a few times in the past and you've not changed it for the people that are here. And somebody else said, well, maybe we should wait until we have the right candidate, and, and if that's something we need to do, then maybe we should entertain it then. From my stance, that looks a little bit more problematic, it looks like you are catering to somebody. Either you have the rule or you don't have the rule. You know, and if, if you're changing that now, knowing that you have these candidates for, for both the positions, you know, then it gives, it gives them a little better opportunity to know what you expect of them, and also, it may open up that applicant pool farther. And again, I think we danced around that when, when this came up initially, as far as not mentioning the residency to, on the, on the ad. Again, in, in this day and age, I mean, I've got, I've got some fantastic guys working for me, I don't get called out all that often. Thankfully, we don't have a murder every week, or, or every year, or every decade, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great place to work and a great, great place to live. And, and my officers do a fantastic job of taking care of a lot of that stuff, so that I don't have to get called in. Sometimes I do, you know, sometimes something's going on, I see a call come out, and living in town, I can, I can go. If this ordinance passed, I don't have any plans on moving out of town, you know, I, I love living here, my wife works here, you know, she needs to leave work and, and go home for something, it's, it's convenient, when my kids start driving, I want them to live in town. But when you try to buy a house in Saint Genevieve, if you don't know somebody that's about to die, you don't have a shot, you know, if I wanna build a house, I can't build in Valley Springs because I want a standalone shop. If I wanna put in a above ground pool, I can't live in Valley Springs. So if I don't live in Valley Springs, where am I gonna build? Leahy? You know, in the flood plain, in a flood buyout? We're, we're limited. No, no. But, I mean, some of that on Leahy that's not flood buyout is still subject to flooding when, when the creek rises, so it, it would, it would be nice from my standpoint to have the option of living close by. I, I am more comfortable living in town, but again, I'm, I'm not gonna be here forever, and I think that if you open this up now, when it is, is truly somewhat subjective, then, then the next person that applies for, for my position or the city administrator's position may be more inclined to put in for it, knowing that they don't have to uproot their kids that have been in school for, you know, ten years of their, of their school career to finish their last two years here, or come and rent a place and, and stay there a couple days a week and, and still be at home on the weekends. I, I think it just puts everybody in a hard, hard position, but again, it's your, it's your decision, so.
I would like to say something for the record. Heard it said here two or three times tonight, that because maybe we have an applicant that's, that, that we're, we're doing this far. For the record, that's not what I'm looking at, we have not, we, we haven't had to hire a city administrator nine years. We, we have to hire, we need to hire a city administrator. You know what, what I'm saying is, is what I don't wanna do is, is just limit it to we have to satisfy for less because we got some archaic ordinance that I understand, and I understand the people, but you gotta understand, in this town, the people like it just the way it is. And sooner or later, we gotta make some changes, and it's, it's hard, it's, it's very hard, and I'm not discrediting anybody, but I, I just think it's just, it's my two, but I don't want anybody to think that, that I have anything to do in anything corrupt or misleading people, I'm not Epsom, I don't want it even implied. So that's my two cents. Joe's got the floor.
Yes. With what you just said, the, your line of thinking is, is we can draw from a better pool of candidates if we release that. The opposite thinking from some, at least one very vocal person is, we will draw better, more dedicated people that have a vested interest by having to live here.
Who may not be qualified, who may not have the qualifications.
May, then, they're not, I mean, that doesn't mean that we can't find someone that is, that's willing to take a vested interest, and is probably eventually gonna do a better job because they have that vested interest. Instead of just leaving here at five o'clock and going home and not thinking about this place for another twelve hours or so. So there's two ways to look at it, and both of them are very valid reasons, so.
Well, and that's, and that's one of the reasons, it's on the, we're gonna, we're going to, you got, we got two more weeks to talk about it, but we're gonna vote on this, and it's gonna be a yes or no. The board is gonna decide, because we are in the process of, not so much with Eric's position, but with Martin's position, we're, in a week or two, we're gonna be looking at applicants, so, and that's, it's gonna, it's gonna hinge on that. Joe, I mean, Jimmy.
I have, me and Mark talked about this at the last meeting. What constitutes will you live? What made, brings residence, because I've heard this story, I've heard that story, and I don't think there's.
So the legal definition of residency is gonna be dependent on the, the individual facts of any particular situation. So, because people can have multiple homes, you can have a house here and a house at the Lady Ozzards. So primarily, the, the courts, when they've had issue, issue rulings on, on these types of things, primarily, you're talking about residency, and the litigation, you're talking about people that are elected officials, because those are statutory requirements.
Right.
And maybe somebody lived here and moved out of the district, or is using their mom's address, but really, they live over here, or whatever the case may be. And, and so you, you have to look at the totality of the circumstances, so, you know, you can have, a person has two different residents, but if they're registered to vote here and they, they have a residence here, and they can't just have a PO box, they have to have a residence. And, and all the, you know, all the factors that go into where a person resides are evaluated, and then by preponderance of those factors, the person resides here, then they reside here, but it's, there's no bright line that says, okay, if you've done this, you're here. But if, if they've established the intent to be a resident of the city, and they have a residence here, that's gonna be good enough, but I can't give you anything more fun than that. That's, that's just light.
As a citizen, what do you have something to say, Brian?
Yes, Brian, we'll open to ten Saint Genevieve Drive.
Thank you.
I just wanted.
Specifically on this issue?
Yes. Yes, yes, specifically on this issue, I just wanted to touch base on, on what Joe said, and I think it's worth mentioning that if the board of Alderman and the city felt that someone who lives out in the county did not have their heart vested into the city as much as they should, the board has the right to terminate that position. So, makes a difficult decision, I understand, but there's always that, that, that scenario.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because it's not gonna be in the job description that you, you have to love Saint Genevieve. It's not gonna be in that job description. You can hire somebody, because they move here, doesn't mean they're gonna love Saint Genevieve. There's no, that's not a requirement.
Be hard to terminate them too, because they don't love Saint Genevieve, you'd have to terminate them on job performance.
There you go. Back to it, that's a good point, job performance, we're hiring an individual to do a job. And that's what we gotta look at, is this job. Whether they love Saint Genevieve or not, it's nothing to do with it, it's doing a job, what this position, if you look at this, the requirements for a city administrator, that's what we're hiring. if you look at this, the requirements for a city administrator, that's what we're hiring them, and then also, we have the wonderful option, if we don't like him, or that, we can get rid of him and hire somebody else, so, that's what I'm looking at, we're not... My two cents again, so, but I, like I say, we can, we can discuss this, you know, forever, but we still, sooner or later, folks, we have to, we have to bring it up and we have to vote on it, and then, if the board decides no, well, it's no, we leave it like it is, if the board decides yes, because you're, you're not gonna change my mind on this issue, it's not gonna happen, you can talk to me till you're blue in the face, bring a thousand people in front of me, I'm not gonna, my mind's made up, Jimmy's mind's made up, I can't persuade him or persuade, no, it's made up, same way, we all make up, and y'all, and that's the great thing about a democracy, and that's why we have a board, and we're gonna make a decision, and then, whatever that decision is, I vow to, and I've always have, and is to support the decision of this board, and you will not hear me out in the public discredit or complain, so, that's my whole point, Bob has, he'll be next.
Thank you, sir.
You know, one of the reasons I brought up tabling it and stuff, is just the close proximity we are to another election, and a new board sitting for that next following year and stuff, and I've seen it in the past and stuff, where one board has voted to do something, and the next board had a different sort of opinion, and that is our right to do that, we're not bound from one board to the next and stuff, so...
So that's been always happened, Bob, we got, you got, every year, we got turnover, so, we, if we go on that reset, we'll, we'll never get anything done, and, and I'm, and I would like to, I wanna, because we need to start thinking seriously about hiring a city administrator, we're, we don't have to hire a police chief, thank goodness, we, we need to hire a city...
And he's not going anywhere, he might think you...
Oh, Gary, you have something to say?
Just for the record, are we tabling both, ladies and gentlemen?
The first one is tabled.
The first one's tabled.
Second one was tabled.
Uh, was it?
We had, there was a motion and a second, yeah.
Did we go around and vote and everything?
We didn't have to go around and vote, but do we have a motion and a second?
I have it, Bob made the motion, and Joe seconded it.
And what was the vote of the...
Table it until the next meeting.
For both of them?
For both of them, okay.
Well, you ordered one.
But I just wanna make sure we're doing both.
Okay.
Can I say one last thing?
Yes, we'd love for you to answer.
Public policy decision, whichever way you wanna go, you have complete discretion, I would ask that you make a decision, a firm decision at, at the next meeting, because you need to have this in place when you're having applicants applying for the position, when you're doing interviews, so they, they understand what the requirements are, because some of them will maybe not apply, some of them maybe will apply, I don't know how that's gonna affect your pool, but you need to have this locked down before and, and not have it tied up in your personnel discussions, because this is a public policy decision, as far as the policy of this board going forward with a, with a city administrator as a resident, or a police chief as a resident, as their qualifications, and generally shouldn't be dependent on the, the particular applicant.
And that's why it was brought up tonight, that's why it was brought up, because now we're two weeks out, and then we're four weeks out for a second reading on it.
For a position...
Unless we have, and I'm not in favor of that, having two readings, but we need to make a decision, or we can, I, I don't have a problem with that either, I just, but... Yes?
Will the next meeting allow for public comments?
Absolutely, we'll do public comments, absolutely.
Can we kind of go for a second reading the same night? That's always, or do we need to...
Well, if you're gonna pass it, yeah.
Right.
But if it's put in town, you're gonna...
Yeah, that's over with, so, yeah, we will, well, that's what the, the board wants to do, so, so very good, taking us to other business, Gary, you have some other business to take care of here.
Oh, yes, real quickly, I was asked on behalf of the Giordetta committee to let the public know that we are still looking for, or they are still looking for, a secretary position, so if anyone is interested in that, they can either contact myself or Jamie Inman, again...
Somebody to be on the board and serve as secretary.
That is exactly right, sir, they're looking for someone to be on the board, serving in the capacity and role of secretary.
For the Giordetta committee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you, that's it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Jim?
I think Gary brought up a good point, I tabled it, but I'm also willing, if it passes, we'll do the second reading at the next meeting.
Okay, okay, I think it's important, I think we, we do that, because we, we need to start looking...
If we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it.
We'll put them on the agenda for first and second reading.
Okay, and then, a little bit of communication, I did have, yesterday, Sonny Meyer from the VFW contacted me, and I met with him, and their, their group wants to designate St. Genevieve POW MIA city, the first bit of business reading through the paperwork is to get the, the okay and approval of the board, there's some other things that come, similar to what we did with Purple Heart City, but this will be, and there's some requirements that's not gonna be of any cost to the city, but they wanna, I wanna have your permission to, to go forward with this.
Yes.
Yes, very good, and a little bit of an update on the National Park, on Monday evening, I was invited to come to, to go to Jeff City, which I did, and to, while they read House Bill twenty-three fifteen, which was presented by Dale Wright, which is, is, and it's going through pretty fast, is transferring the deeds of three more properties from the DNR, the Natural Resources, from the state to the, to the federal government, the Felix Valley House, the Shaw House, and the Green Tree Tavern, and it's gonna go through really fast, they've got an expedite on it, it's coming from Senator Blunt, once it's done, it was, it was, it was, it was an easy sell there, so, that's gonna, and hopefully, that's gonna help establish that park, and I believe that park is gonna get established here this year, I'm hoping, you know, but, it is moving along, and any more updates, I'll let you know.
Thanks, sir.
Is there any other conversation we need to have, Joe?
Nope.
Okay, if there's no other, anything to, to discuss, I'll adjourn this meeting, thank you.
There's a couple.